And I'm going to read the required data. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And the governor's July 16 revised order extending remote participation to all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the meeting. And parties with whom a right and requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. See instructions at the top of the agenda. No in person attendance and members of public will be permitted, but every offer will be made to ensure that public can adequately address the proceedings in real time via technological meetings. All votes are to be roll call votes. And attending the meeting electronically are members. Garfield Reed, Bill Cook, Joe Method and myself Fred Clark. As of right now. So we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm sorry about the September meeting. We canceled the September meeting due to technological problems. I got an email from the IT coordinator. The following day that said that we weren't the only ones that there were a couple of other committees that had issues. With scheduling on that, so I apologize for that. There's a lot that we need to talk about. As a result. And. I just want to say make a comment about. Some of the dialogue that when it when. On on the August meeting and Amy particularly you. I need to, you know, basically apologize for the abruptness of some of the discussion. And hopefully we can do a better job with that. We need to do a better job of. Letting people speak. You were an invited guest and we didn't, you know, let you come in and do your presentation. I think sometimes when we send out. Early. Zoom. Parts of the participation. People think they've seen it all, but you know, in my experience, it really benefits from having you participate. So we'll try to do a better job in the future. That is my little spiel. I think the first. Item on business tonight is the approval of the minutes for the August 16th meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the minutes as written.
In a second.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, so Bill Cook, how do you vote?
Hi.
Garfield Reed, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe Method.
I haven't reviewed them, so but we don't need a write.
We don't need a what?
Ain't I guess.
We don't need, we just need a majority vote.
Yeah, so.
Are you voting nay or abstain?
Abstain, abstain.
And I vote to approve, so the minutes are accepted. As 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 issued. There's a lot of things that we need to talk about. And I just want to go briefly over the agenda so that we have an idea. I'd like to end this meeting by eight o'clock, so there's a lot of stuff coming up. Most importantly, on my calendar is the CPA or the Community Preservation Act deadline. The first is this, this. The first deadline is this month and we need to put in a dollar number. And then the follow up will be scheduled later in November or early December. We basically need to talk about a budget going forward too. And in order to talk about a budget, we need to talk about some of the programs and some of the ideas that you guys talked. So it's all kind of knitted together. Amy Turnbull is with us again tonight representing the American Tiny House Association. And. Amy, do you want to address our group and talk about a little bit of follow up on the? On your ideas?
So I think going forward, the best idea would be, and we talked about this in an email, I think Fred is to amend the language in. What you already have to allow people to have down payments to include. Tiny houses as ADUs. I'm not sure you can do that because I know you have to work with the bank. And also I had thought you needed to get a vote to change that language, but I think you said that you did not.
I don't think we have any language that excludes ADUs.
Well, in particular, you would have to add language for. You would, I think the way, the best way to to set it up with the bank and going forward would be something like an equity loan. So I talked to the bank and the bank said they they've hardly made any of those down payment loans. Primarily because you have to be really poor to get one and then you have to qualify and houses are so expensive. That the numbers just don't pan out. So so a tiny house, if you, so if you took out an equity loan. And the banks were amenable to working with the Affordable Housing Trust and you said, okay, if you put in there, you could use this money to put in a pad. That, in my opinion, would would go a long way to helping people get started to to placing tiny houses. And once again, I I want to qualify that that movable tiny houses are much more affordable. Especially if they're already existing than building an ADU. But of course, ADUs are also important.
So the problem I see is what we're talking about is giving the person who owns the tiny house alone. Which I think we could figure out a structure.
No, actually, it wouldn't be the tiny house person, it would be the homeowner.
We might need to have the homeowner be income qualified.
So when you, so it's 100%, right? Income qualification?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and honestly, that would be your target audience, that would be your demographic. Because the people who can't afford to build a conventional ADU would be those people. So these are people who probably have been in their homes for a long time. They may be struggling with taxes. You know, maybe their house is appreciated, but they still have to make a pretty hefty mortgage. And so. They they may not have equity, you know, in the house or enough equity to build. So when I priced out building an ADU, and this was, I don't know, a year or two years ago, it was going to be about $150,000 for. I think like a like a 16 by 20, no frills, no, no extras kind of house. And so you got to imagine that it's closer to like 200 to probably 250,000 now. So. So you know, so changing the language to say, okay, yeah, we can give a loan to a someone who owns a home who only earns 100% of, you know, the income for the area. If they want to place a movable tiny house and we'll use that money to put in a pad. And then whatever else that entails.
And but, you know, and then it has to be. Under our current structure, that loan has to be paid back when the house is sold.
I actually. I had a long talk with. With Vermont, they they do a lot of really interesting things, a lot like Oregon and California. And I talked to the guy who did a program to incentivize ADUs. And he said that he's sorry that he set it up that way where it was a 20 year loan or a grant. Because that doesn't really, because once that money's gone, it's just gone.
Right.
So if you could set it up as like a revolving loan trust, you know, so that. So so the people who move into these tiny houses can can pay a certain amount of rent. And then you just have an agreement with the people who are living. You know, who who own the house that the rent will be paid back into the housing trust for two years. And then they can start to recoup, you know, their return on their investment. Then you can start to take that money and build it and make more placements.
Yeah, that that would work. I think we could structure that somehow. I think. So from my perspective, thinking about this, we have two options. Basically. A loan that needs to be paid back on which we need to have. Some sort of filing on the deed so that we have a guarantor. We have some sort of, rather than just a personal note, we need some sort of a lien, if you will.
Right, yeah, deed restriction, that's that's the way to go, in my opinion, shared housing and deed restriction. For for this kind of, you know, structure or for, you know, adaptive reuse.
I think the other option is to provide a grant, an outright gift of money. But when we do that, we would need to have some sort of a deed restriction. It can be time limited. But. You know, so it would. Sunset, if you will. 10 years down the road, whatever, pick number, pick the number you want, seven years. Whatever.
The trouble with that is it's not that expensive to to put in a pad, so seven years might be too long. But we could definitely work out those details later. Again, I I hesitate with grants, I think that would be great for, you know, if it's a really unique situation. But I really am a fan of 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 having monies in circulation. So if you if you do a grant and it's spent, it's just gone.
Bill, you've worked on this issue. Do you have comments?
Yeah, it's really hard to build an ADU, but Tiny House on Wheels, getting the platform, I think that'd be okay. I don't think that the homeowner would have to be income qualified. They're essentially developing the housing. The person that has tiny house would have to be the one that was income qualified. So I don't think we have.
It could be both, actually.
It could be both, but it doesn't have to be, I don't think. And I think 25,000 is a good amount to create something like that. As far as encouraging people to build ADUs in this current. Fiscal era where it's $400 a square foot and 7% interest. You have to give them a couple hundred thousand dollars to encourage somebody to build an ADU that they can rent affordably. But for this. Tiny House on Wheels thing, I think it has potential.
I scoped out your property, Bill.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at it on Mooney Mapper and.
Yes, I met with Kate too, and I'm waiting, I'm still waiting for an estimate from a guy that's going to do the work, but.
Yeah, good luck with that, getting getting folks out there is tough.
Yeah.
So do we, can we talk about a framework that we could go forward with? Or? And try to work on some of the technical details and 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 try to put this in place? Or do we want to continue to look at things? Originally, when we talked, I was hoping that we could have. A tiny house incentive program. Whether grand or lone that. Worked with an with an ADU program, in other words, a tiny house is basically an ADU under our code. And if we could develop an ADU. Incentive program. We could apply it to tiny houses or we could apply it to the the room over the garage.
So originally, when I, when I proposed this, I had said that when we do the demonstration project and we work through it. As a pilot, that I could certainly. When I, when or I or someone else writes up how to do it and gets it to publish. You know, to to be published, it could include ADUs as well because a lot of it is the same. So it could be, it could definitely just be for both, you know, it's an ADU. You further qualify it and say it's it's a movable tiny house ADU.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a new program and not, I think trying to tie it in with the down payment assistance is, they're too different. I think we make it a new program, it's an incentive program to create. Spaces for ADUs.
I I watch Chris's head when when things come up. The planner. It's like, no.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Remble, I'm the Assistant Town Manager, Planning Director. Yeah, I think it is a separate program and maybe it'd be cleaner to keep it separate from the Down Payment Assistance Program that way. You could tailor it specifically to what would make an ADU or or movable tiny house work. Whether it's a straight out grant for infrastructure or maybe a longer term. Loan that converts to a grant or forgivable loan, so. Yeah, I I think as Fred said, it can all be structured. And definitely agree with Bill to keep the concepts a little bit separate. Yeah, very exciting.
Anyone else, Garfield or Joe, do you have any comments?
I just I just wanted to clear on what the what the ask is for Affordable Housing Trust.
To be determined, I think.
I mean, oh, I want to see it. I want to see it happen.
Which included a survey and a few other things, and I don't know whether we want to. Go all in for that or not, I mean. My basic idea or the basic idea that I would suggest is. That we do a demonstration project, we do one project that might cost us more money, might, you know. Try to work out some of the details of these things. That project is the one that we can then talk about and learn from. And I I don't know what the ask is.
We spoke a little bit about this, our subcommittee today, Sub-Housing Committee. And kind of deemed that it might be something that we should be looking at, which is the Affordable Housing. My thought is it just kind of occurred to me, we're doing an incentive, which is a great idea. Is are we using our monies and what will it do to our monies as far as us maybe trying to use it elsewhere after we've sunk some money into this program? Do we have the funds to?
We, to address your question, we have the funds right now, we have about 245,000 of which. Probably 75,000 will will need to be fun, will need to fund the. Rental Assistance Program that we operate with construct. So taking that into consideration. Roughly 150, 160 is the money. This program would cost roughly $40,000 right off the bat, 40, 50, right off the bat. For the first project. Probably 25 or so after that, so.
Do we have the power to incentivize, if you will, do we have the monies, is it nothing, something that the town has to do or not?
No, we we could do it ourselves, our own. Our money is not restricted, it's available for quote, any, any housing. Reason.
So. So the the 40,000, that's that's to do. Like like surveys, it's to do surveys, right?
I think the CDC is actually doing a survey.
But I I remember. I remember from the original proposal, it was like, it was basically to fund somebody to to. To do the survey prior to a pilot, is that is that they do?
Concurrently or before or after, there was some question about the timing of it, I think Bill was concerned about about it. He wanted to do the survey first, is that right, Bill? He felt like we should do the survey first.
But I think the. From what I I heard from Carol at the CDC, I think they are actually doing a survey of some kind around this.
If we're doing one already, we can definitely, you know, use that to our advantage if they'll share it. I I I like a demonstration project because. It's really difficult to wrap your head around all of the minutia that's involved in doing this. And so I think if we do one. Do one that is, you know, affordable, like I know Bill's going to be doing one on his own. But if we do it with with the affordability aspect of it and we show people, you know, that it can be done. Then I think they could get really excited about it. And I think you'd see your money disappear fairly quickly.
As I said, at a couple of open meetings that we've had, we've had people speak up and say they have a tiny house and they've been looking for a site. So there were at least two people that have come forward. In the last few months. So Amy, let me ask. If, are you prepared to go ahead with, you know, sort of a turnkey operation to put something in the ground and do the survey and all that sort of things that you think are necessary? Or would you be?
So I have a host in mind. And it's really going to come down to. Whether or not we, whether or not you guys are going to back it or not. So this is somebody who lives in Who's Tonic, who has a real estate neighbor, the the tiny is going to be on her lot, but very close to this real estate person. So she wants to make sure it's legitimate and that everything's done correctly. So so she needs to know how to do it and she needs to make sure that it's legal. There's a lot of moving pieces, you know, you have to have a lease, so we need some legal, Carol, Carol, not Carol deal. Forget her name, but we've got, we've got somebody who's going to come in and pro bono do some work for us. Or at least very inexpensively to set up a lease. Document, because I think that's going to be very important and I know it is to the the person who who is looking to place one of these. So that's the long answer, yes. With a promise from the Affordable Housing Trust for a certain amount of money, I'm ready to go.
So we could actually fund that before we go anytime now, right? If we decide to do that. We have some unrestricted funds that we can. Essentially funded this program to the tune of, I don't know, it probably is not going to be more than $20,000 to do the setup work.
The actual, yeah, the actual structure, but then you're talking about, you know, my time. Or whoever, you know, you wanted to, if you wanted to hire somebody else, I mean, you don't have to hire me, but. You know, because there's a lot of things to be done. Lot of time, lot of hours.
So so is is there, so is 40, is 40,000 the number you're looking for?
Original proposal was $50,000.
Okay.
And and honestly, so 30,000 was a sort of like a one time. You know, we'll, we'll go in and we'll do all the work, we'll, you know, do the survey, we'll, we'll find a contractor. We'll mat, we'll do the match, we'll do all the documentation and have it ready, the graphics and blah, 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 and all ready to go. And so that was 30,000 and then 20,000 was a a projection. Because we we're really finding, and I know Bill will back me up on this, to get people to come in and quote is is really hard. But I think once we get going, like if if, you know, the American Tiny House can say, oh, we've got three people. And and I can find people who are. You know, subcontractors, electrical, excavating and plumbing. And that they they agree that, yeah, we'll come on board and they'll be our team, then I think it's viable.
So you would essentially act as a developer.
Oh, my God, please don't say that. I went to planning school, I was like, no, I'll be working with developers, no, I can't do it. I'm all about affordable housing, so. But I guess, yeah, you could say maybe like I would be a. I I'd be a connector, how about that?
So Chris, Chris, for technical, do we, do we need to put an RFP out? In order to award this money?
I think we can ask for, do we have to do an RFP?
Could we call it engineering?
Well, it's over 10,000.
Yeah, 10, over 10 it is, for some reason, I was thinking it was 30. Yeah, I think you'd have to do an RFP. It's not engineered.
So what does that mean for us, we've already put the proposal together, is it just a matter of re-typing it in a different format-ish?
Ish, yes.
I think with our feedback. I mean, I'm not, I'm not all that crazy about spending a lot of money on a survey. I want basically a demonstration, I mean, what I would see is a demonstration project and one that. Deals with all of these kinds of things, in the end of the day, we want a product. The products could be the documents that we can, you know, use going forward. They could be, you know, from the state or from another town adapted to us. The lease document that we can then provide to the. Owner of the land to to use as a template, they'd have to have their own lawyer look at it, but. As a template. And. What's important to me is at the end of the day, we actually build a project and we don't end up just doing documents that we put on a shelf. So I think that's what we will be asking for. My feeling is, once we've done this. And. Perhaps had a chance to talk about it and publicize it, then we can do a survey to see how successful that publication. Is how how much it's gotten out into the marketplace.
Well, I think, once we do it, if we just get people who. I don't think we need a survey, I think you just need to know who's applying, you'll just see people apply. Because the survey is going to already be done. I mean, I guess the the point of the survey. I I feel the most important part of the survey would be. How many people can actually cite these because you're restricted by setbacks? So you've got a front setback and a side setback. And the the most, the the best place to put these tiny houses is on existing lots in town, on town water and sewer. But you've got some restrictions there, so that was going to be part of the survey where I would look at like GIS data. Measure some lots and the survey part of it was walking around and doing some visual fieldwork. Which I am familiar with doing. When I worked for AmeriCorps for for Neighbor Works. They did a like a community survey, so.
Honestly, I don't see the benefit for us.
Well, because you better know how many you can build, so.
We can only, we can only really substantially do a couple of these a year.
Well, the the that would become a resource, though, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily just be for us, it would, it would be for. You can make a website that would that would have the information that you could then, you know. There's also this idea of of pushing the information, like emailing people or mailing people and saying, like, did you know you could have an ADU on your property?
I think the other way to look at it is to say. You can build an ADU on your property, here are the qualifications, you know, for zoning, we can check your property on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, you might have something where like, even if you couldn't fund it. If you ran out of money, you could still say like, you know, you're still going to get rent on your property.
It makes no sense to me to survey 90% of the people who aren't going to be interested in in doing this.
Well, is the is the meaning of the word survey here like looking around, not not just. You're saying that you'd actually like look at maps and stuff as part of a survey, right?
Well, I would.
Yeah.
But but I think if Fred's saying that we only have so much money available, it's a moot point.
Yeah.
I think really what we're looking for is people who are willing to do it. There's probably a lot of lots in town that you can actually put a tiny house on wheels. Within the setbacks and everything, but I think the harder thing is finding someone. That wants a tiny house on wheels in their yard.
I mean, if you can build a garage, you can build a tiny house.
Yeah.
I mean, where I live in Who's Tonic, it's 10 foot, 10 foot side yards, 10 foot rear yard setbacks. So. So. And even on a quarter acre lot, you know, you don't get anywhere near close to percentage of lot coverage or any of those kind of restrictors.
So the people that I have surveyed informally. The people who really want them are the people who are not tied to town sewer and water. But I'm having a real heck of a time with that, um. Because there's much more trenching. And then you might have some really old houses that need like new electric panels, um. The the line to run the water is hugely long, you know, the people who want to live in a tiny house want to live far back away from the house, you know, so. It's all about cost, um, and then there was the issue of, I talked to the Board of Health and. It's legal to put in a composting toilet, but no one's done it. So I I think what we should do is try to do a town uh, project. That's easier and cheaper, and then maybe at some point branch out for people who would want to do it, you know, that are off grid.
Uh, does anyone else want to speak? Um, Ms. Forrest, do you have anything that you'd like to contribute?
You have to unmute.
I did.
Yeah.
You can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. Hello, everybody. I just want to start by saying thank you all for. All the hard work you're doing to bring this really important project to Great Barrington. I've been kind of following along in the background, um, ever since I. I went to Amy's home when you had that little tiny home in your backyard and. Knew it was a possibility, I've been dreaming about building and putting a tiny home in a a welcoming, loving community that. I would like to be a part of for over a decade now and, um. I've been coming up to the Berkshires for three decades and supporting Tanglewood and volunteering at Crepollo and being a part of that community. Um, and I very much would like to support this project in some way, shape or form. Um, not just from the background anymore, but I'd like to be the demonstration project, um, be one of them somehow. Put a tiny house in Great Barrington on a piece of land. So I wanted to show up, I wanted to show my support. Um, I have a yoga and mindfulness business that I was bringing into the education field and, um. It was a sustaining business model pre-COVID. But then COVID came and it closed all of the schools and my business disappeared overnight. So my income disappeared overnight and I'm trying to build my, um, business online again. Or online so that I can still support teachers, still support educators and students and, um. And I I need support and I want to share my support, I'd like to be a voice to help bring this project to fruition. In Great Barrington, I think that as forward thinking as we all are in this moment, it's really what our country needs. On such a deep, deep level with such tremendous affordable housing issues happening. I think we can really help to make a change in Massachusetts in our country, and I really want to be a part of that.
Well, that's wonderful. I'm sure you can provide Amy with your contact information, so.
Yes.
We're all set with that, in fact, yeah, I have like the perfect demonstration model, but there's too much of a conflict of interest, so. Um. Wow.
And and.
Okay, um, well.
Maybe, can I just say it may be the demonstration model or it may be something different, Bill? But I would like to put a tiny house in Great Barrington, um, in the spring or summer, if we can all make that happen together.
Uh, I think we've got the outlines of a plan, um. I'm gonna work on it, I know the CDC, uh, Community Development Corporation is very interested as well. Um. With the committee's endorsement, uh, I can work on this and maybe pull in Amy and. Bill or whomever else, uh, wants to contribute and we'll put together something that we can, um. Try to move forward with. Does that sound like the 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 framework of a plan?
Yes.
Um, going forward, good. Thank you very much, Amy, and thank you, um, Ms. Forrest, for your contributions.
Thank you.
I knew we need, we have a very short period of time and we have a lot of things to talk about.
Have a hand up, Fred.
Oh, I'm sorry, Garfield, I didn't see it, you're up in my corner.
Yes.
Please.
All right, um. Part of this, uh, getting this done is having people that will actually accept and or have the space to do this. Um, so we don't really know if that's the case. And I'm thinking we probably need to get our ducks in a row. And and find out and take it out there and see if to actually, and we're doing all this work and what if nobody wants to do it? What if we got two people, two people is better to know people, I understand, but, um. Geez, it'd be nice to know that it's wanted other than us.
Anecdotally, we know it's wanted, but that's, you know, it's not really. A number of people.
Right, maybe we could, um, put an ad in the shopper's guide or something and say. If this was the case or something like that.
I'm thinking the same thing, truthfully, Bill, but I think we should have everything that's possible. That we're thinking entered into this, so everyone could see it, have a clearer understanding, but I agree, I think it needs to be. And I think Joe said something as well, we need to put it out there some some degree.
Well, I think it's important, if you're gonna put it out there, that you you have made the commitment to make the funding, because. It takes money to, to get people interested, it's gonna, yeah, because the people who are who who want to put in tiny houses and the people who. Would benefit from having them. Don't have the number one information on how to do it and they don't have the money to do it, so, you know, I've I've been on Facebook. Many, many times and the interest is there, so I think we just have to get together, like Fred said, come up with some hard numbers. And a structure and, um, and and go forward on a demonstration project, and I I I do believe. There there may be just a few, um, if we can make it a revolving loan fund, maybe there'll be more, um. You know, over the next couple of years, and I know that the Sustainability Committee talked about a regional effort. So, you know, it's not just Great Barrington, um, Stockbridge is looking at us, um, Egremont's looking at us, we've. Had some some meetings with some affordable housing people there and. You know, people are are ready to see it, they're ready for a new model, like, you know, like Kate said, and I I think this is it.
I suppose we should have a program before we start marketing program.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Good idea.
I I think that we need to get something going.
Can I just have, say one more thing?
Yeah, of course.
Thought that I was thinking that in a red somewhere, isn't that the case that I don't know if that would be a problem? But people don't really stay in these homes very long. Before they're moving out and that we left empty grabs or not?
Well, typically, the.
The three or four years.
Trend is about three to five years, they're, you know, the. Honestly, they are houses on trailers, they are not RVs, they're not that lightweight, they are a little hard to. Slop around, you know, all over the country and the wear and tear is a lot, um. They they sit for about three to five years, like I said, um. So and and it doesn't really matter, because once you have the pad, the benefit is really. It's a, it's a dual benefit, it's for the people who are getting income, so it's for people in Great Barrington. Who who need to help pay for their taxes and whatnot, and so what would happen is you'd have a lease. The lease would be up, the payments have been made, and then somebody new comes in and you just start over again.
Yes.
In theory, that would be the way it would work, yes.
Well, we did it, you know, up in Santa Rosa, so, um, we do, we do have some experience behind this.
Okay, um, I think we've got a a a a plan, uh, going forward, uh, and I think we need to move on to the the next sort of thing. I'd like to segue into talking about ADUs, uh, Bill, I don't know if you're still with us, um, but.
I'm still here, I'm just eating.
We didn't want to see that, um. You and Ananda were working on an ADU program, uh, do you want to tell us about it or do you want to defer to the next meeting?
Um, what we sort of discovered is that it's just. The payback is is just too long a time, it's. To build something right now at four hundred dollars a square foot and seven percent interest, even if you get a home equity loan to build it. It's just, uh, you can't build very much. Um. I don't think anybody's gonna want to take that jump, that's kind of the conclusion I came to, is that. I don't think we're gonna get anybody that wants to build an ADU right in the next couple of years for sure. That's that's sort of where we ended, I think.
But what if you, uh, what if you had some space, like a garage or something that you could convert? So that you weren't building everything, you had a shell.
Yeah, that's possible, um. So I think that's a possible other program as well, we could have something for that, but. You know, twenty five thousand dollars, even if you already have a shell, I'm gonna go very far these days. And.
Or you have a big house and you want to convert it into a two-family.
Yeah, um.
Kitchen, bathroom.
Um, yeah, you could do that, I suppose. It's. I don't know, just, um. If I if I had a one family and wanted to convert it to a two-family, I don't think I'd choose to do it anytime in the next couple of years. Only just because of the cost of everything and the interest rates at this point.
Even with rents at fifteen hundred dollars a month and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even if the town did a tax deferral on the added values?
Okay, now you're talking.
Hmm. Chris tells me it's fairly inexpensive. To do like a five or ten year tax deferral.
Okay.
Only on the added value, not on the whole house.
Right, right.
Say your house is worth, pick a number, three hundred thousand. The assessor comes in and says, now you have a two-family, it's worth four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, they want to pay, they want you to pay taxes on an additional hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, theoretically, it it, you know, Provincetown did it. As a model, uh, it takes a. State leg- an action of the state legislature and the town meeting to to go for and select board to go forward, but, um. Theoretically, it's possible to do that.
Yeah.
If you actually run the numbers, it's not terrible.
Okay. So that could be another program.
It's something we have to get involved with the political part of it.
Right.
So.
Well, how to do?
Is is there any reason not not to do that?
No.
It's a lot of work.
But I mean, but I mean, like, like, if no one takes us up on it. Then you don't spend any money, then you don't lose revenue. And if people take up, take it up, then the incentive's working.
Right.
Sure, but it's a lot of work to put that together, you know. We need to do a little bit more research and copy the Provincetown model and see what they did and how that's structured. Get a copy of those documents, which we can do.
We we have that, uh, no need for the trust to to put this on your to-do list. I think that'll be independent of your efforts here tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, so so Planning Board is is just gonna.
Planning, planning and the, um. Selectboard, planning subcommittee and the selectboard are all aware of of this.
So like basically coming coming soon to town meeting?
Uh, I hope for next next spring, yes.
Well, you're talking about the tax deferral only.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, just just that that piece of it, like, it just seems like it just makes sense, just do it.
I mean, that, I think that would help make the thing possible. It might actually encourage somebody to do it.
It's it's worth, um, you know, thinking about the ADU, maybe. Maybe it costs too much to build an ADU right now, and maybe somebody does have a shell of a garage that they can convert into an affordable ADU. If they have, um, down payment assistance grant, maybe a little bit more money from the trust, uh. In addition to the twenty five thousand down payment assist, maybe you have another twenty five thousand behind that. Because codes are really tough to meet nowadays, especially if you're just converting a shell. And maybe there's a tax deferral, so maybe it all adds up, um. And maybe somebody has an existing two-family that technically is illegal, they gotta bring it up to code. I think it's worth the trust considering using its funds for any of these. Types of.
Yeah.
Conversions, particularly of structures that exist that can be converted. For, you know, it's gonna cost, but it's relatively more modest than building a new structure.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so long as it's deed restricted for a certain amount of time that you. Think is reasonable to. Uh, a homeowner and or tenant that is, um, a hundred percent AMI or less, you know, these are all. These are all within your reach, especially if if you have additional CPA funds.
So I'm I'm thinking about the CPA request this year, and I'm thinking if we have, you know. Three or four different programs like this, including then also a down payment and rental assistance programs. We ask for a larger lump sum that can be spent on any of those programs as needed. But we'll we'll have a lot of programs that we're bringing to the table. And why not just ask for just a half a million dollars or whatever to.
I realize the whole CPA is six hundred thousand this year.
Yeah, we'll give them some money.
And by law, we can't ask, we we have to leave ten percent for open space and ten percent for historic reservation.
Okay.
I know, and I know that, you know, other members have said, well, what, that leaves eighty percent for us.
It did.
But, yeah, um. May I remind you that there's a new chair of the CPA committee this year and, uh, you know. Uh.
Who's that?
We probably can't take all of all of the funds for all of the town. I think that probably the realistic number is, we 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 were successful with two hundred thousand last year. Uh, I I am recommending two hundred and fifty thousand ask this year.
That seems good.
You don't want to ask for more?
I think that two fifty will be a reasonable maximum, there's going to be a lot of demand on the CPA this year from various. Projects.
So if we have a bunch of programs, we ask for two hundred and fifty thousand for all these various things, whichever comes up. I think that's a reasonable ask.
But, you know, we need to demonstrate some of these projects, just like the tiny house, we need to do one or two or whatever.
Right.
We're talking fifty thousand dollars for each of these kinds of things for the first. You know. First couple, first one or two. Uh, so. We do, we are able to, yeah. The rental assistance has slowed down with no longer a hundred thousand dollars, it's more like. Fifty thousand, seventy five thousand. Uh, the down payment assistance program program for. You know, existing single family houses is basically evaporate, we've had no requests at all for six months.
Yeah.
Uh, or longer.
We have to up our loan to a hundred grand.
Even then, it would be very difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, it it is, the problem is the. How long it takes to act on real estate, anything that's under four hundred thousand gets snapped up right now. Um, in in any kind of a decent condition. Um, anyway. Um, so is it the committee's, um. Desire that we work towards developing an ADU? Uh, grant loan slash incentive program?
I go along with that.
I mean, uh, so I so I don't know, uh, off the top of my head, but, I mean, is there evidence that they work well? It's not, it, I. There there is not, you said?
Well, there's no evidence that they work well or not, they might.
Well, it's anecdotal.
Yeah.
It's only anecdotal.
There's really no data.
Because, you know, it it's two-sided, it it creates an affordable housing unit. So that's, that doesn't exist before, but it also provides income for a homeowner. Who needs, uh. Money to meet their bills and 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 taxes. Uh, mortgages, things like that, so. Anecdotally, uh, sure, I mean, rather than have, you know, a lot of people living in way too big a houses. This creates more, um. More housing on the same amount of land. More housing on the same amount of land.
Yeah, I, it, it, it makes sense to me, um. If it's being recommended, but, but people have, like, seen, seen this in, in action, I, I think we should use our. Expend our energy to make it happen, cause, cause.
Yeah, again, it, it's happened in, at least, at least Province Town and. We, we have access to those kinds of documents that they, uh. They use to create that, we can look at the templates and see how well we can adapt them to us. Um. Moving along, because, you know, I really wanna wrap up by eight if we can.
One little thing to say, you did say that you wanted to make sure we all felt that was the way to go. Um, so I guess you're asking for all our opinions.
Opinion, not a vote.
Okay, I'm not voting, I'm just offering an opinion, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. My other thought is I'm wondering, I could be way off. Um, that we won't be so. The tunnel vision with this that we don't keep our eyes open for other possibilities and or other ways to expand. Not just, or do we really need just the focus right now on this one avenue?
Well, I, I think you made some good points, and you know, Joe talked to me, uh. After the last meeting about, you know, doing goal setting and coming up with some milestones, so I put that on the agenda too. And I think that's a good point. I think that. This committee, I mean, this, these are my personal views now. Uh, not that anything else isn't, but. Is that we're better off creating programs that award money to. Nonprofits and others who can put housing in place. We don't have the staff time or the resources. To build projects, to do another North Plain Road, for instance, which is taking. Probably six or seven years between the time that's conceived and the time that it's a hundred percent finished. And while it does provide, you know, twenty, up to twenty units that didn't exist before. Uh, that's a lot of work. Uh, that we really don't have the time or energy to be able to take on. So basically, what I'm trying to say is, we need to run programs. In general, so that we can. Uh, incentivize, I like that word. Uh, affordable housing. Uh, rather than do projects where we're actually the developer and creating affordable housing. Okay.
So there's, there's one other program that we could have if we're having this, uh. Collection of programs, which is, um. Some of the new, uh, rental developments that are being done. I think are open to getting some kind of buy down for a deed restriction on affordability. Um, I don't know what they're gonna ask. But I think it might be worth having a conversation with, uh, Ian about. You keep some of those buildings in the Mahawi Block, uh, afford, some of those apartments affordable in the Mahawi Block.
Uh, I. Is everyone familiar with the Mahawi Block, uh, issue, it was in the Berkshire Eagle. Mahawi Block is, you know, in where the Mahawi Theater is, it's a very, very large, uh. Early twentieth century building that historically has had very cheap. Uh, rooms and apartments in it. Um. It's served as a very important. Place where people could get a room for three hundred dollars, as little as three hundred dollars a month or five hundred dollars a month. The consequence, though, is that there really hasn't been any capital invest, or limited capital investment. And there's a lot of repairs that needed, the building is, is really in, in tough shape right now. And the owner knew this, and he's, they found. Ian, who depending upon, Chris told me, depending on who you talk to, he's either a saint. Or a devil who's, you know, raising rents, he's basically putting in a couple million dollars into the building. But he's very, um, empathetic to the plight of the existing tenants. Uh, and has worked very hard to try to. Uh, reach out to people like the Community Development Corporation to. Find places for them, find areas to do it. Because of that, um. It's, you know, empathy that he has and because he really wants to do the right thing. Uh, it may be possible to. Uh. Request or, or propose that. He, uh, create. Income qualified affordable units that are deed restricted. Well, there's probably gonna be a cost to that, uh, per unit. To, uh, because he would get less rent, basically. He's not required to do that under the, the zoning code, sometimes. Zoning codes have these things built in which require a certain number of income qualified units. That doesn't apply in this case, uh, no change of occupancy, uh, that kind of thing. And, um. We, um. We could possibly buy deed restrictions. I don't know what the marketplace would, you know, value that is, I suspect it's fairly pricey.
I, I don't think it, it would be a deed restriction, I think it would be just an agreement between the developer. Um, a housing trust that in exchange for X number of dollars, they would keep two of the units affordable for X number of years.
How do we know that's gonna be, he doesn't sell it on or, or whatnot, how do you qualify the income, I mean, I think it has to be. I think it has to be codified.
Well, if he sells it, he has to give us the money back that was not allocated, but.
Chris has his hand up.
It's probably a deed restriction, some sort of recordable agreement. Um, but this is relative to what I was saying earlier and, and also kind of takes off on what Garfield said not to get. You know, definitely to focus on things like the A D U program and other things. Um, and making those work, but not lose sight of other ways to get affordable housing. Throughout town, whether it's building out a shell of a garage, converting it to, into a two family. Uh, buying an existing two family or at least the affordability of, for a two family. And this, in this case, you have multifamily, um, projects where, um. You know, an infusion of grant funds from the trust could. You know, get the rents down to an affordable level, at least for a few units, so. It's the same sort of thing, um. Getting the trust funds out there for a variety of projects to, to make. Affordable units happen, um, what is the cost of doing it? It's expensive, uh, it's not twenty thousand here, thirty thousand there, it's. It's a hundred thousand per unit gained, uh, at least, at least. It depends on how far down you wanna drive the, uh, income qualification. If it's, and how much work has to be done to that single family, two family, multifamily property. If it's gonna take a lot of work and you wanna drive it down so it's affordable to somebody who makes sixty percent of the area median income. Then there will have to be a lot of grant funds involved. And or if it's a long term restriction. If it's a short term restriction, just at a hundred percent, so that, so that. The residents are just at a hundred percent of area median income. Maybe you're talking fifty, seventy, five, hundred thousand per unit, but it's a lot of money per unit. And that's, that's the market.
We can pay the rent with fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the marketplace we're operating in, um, currently. And, and it, and it goes to Amy's previous arguments that a movable tiny house is a lot cheaper, harder to do. But a lot cheaper. Well, I, I think we need to be open to all these strategies if, if, if we can be.
Well, and, and the economics of it, I'm, I'm very unsure about, um, and I, for myself, I just wanna. You know, um, between now and next meeting, I'll, I'll try to just educate myself on it. But it seems like one, one difference is that. You, when you're securing a, um, affordable unit and paying to, to, to secure it. Um, you haven't actually increased the housing supply. You, you, um, you're, you're subsidizing two units that were already going to get built.
Correct, you're, you're increasing affordable housing, but not housing in general.
Right, and, and so. Yeah, I, I, I just don't know, I don't have a good, um, intuition about, like, what, which is more effective, it's just that I know that if you. If you get, if you got two, two more A D U's, then you would definitely, those would definitely be affordable. And you could sort of not care about, and you would also have the, the supply effect of those two, uh, market rate units.
Sure. And, and to Chris's point about the cost, you only have to look at the, um. The condo apartments over the co-op to, you know, to see what the marketplace is willing to. Willing to pay right now for, for, for some of these units.
Hmm.
It's very desirable, so, you know. I, I think we can keep a, an open mind, um. My sense is that it's gonna be a little more money than we have available.
Yeah.
And a little bit more time than, than we have available.
But, but I, I think, and, and I, we're gonna have this conversation about goals, but like, to me. To also just the ideas of like spending a hundred thousand dollars to get one unit. Um, but it, it's not very attractive to me, cause it, I, it, what's more attractive is to start something that. That, um, like, is like kindling for, for, for something else. Um, so.
I mean, to go back to Amy's or, or earlier point about revolving loan fund or, or things like that. That's something that, oh, you know, has come up before. And so rather than just, you know, I see us more. Trying to transition to being a catalyst for some of these things to happen. Maybe we don't, you know, we're never gonna make money, maybe we don't lose money. Uh, too much, um, uh, but maybe we, you know, spend some money and get some, some benefits. Uh, for some of these things.
Right.
And I think that's one of the things that we need to talk about, you know, maybe. After we get through the C P A funding. We can use the meetings after this to have like, uh, a dedicated planning. Planning and goal setting meeting, uh, November, December, say, something like that, or maybe after Christmas. Uh, excuse me. Um. And the other, um, thing that I wanted to talk about was the, uh, ARPA funds, the America, American Recovery. And Planning Act.
Something.
Um. As you know, we have requested, uh, funds from the ARPA funds. Uh, we wrote a letter, or I wrote a letter that asked for five hundred thousand dollars from the, the town's allocation. Um, technically, that money has to be spent before the end of fiscal twenty twenty four, I believe. Cause when it was granted, it was required that it, you know, actually be used.
Granted by, granted by twenty four, spent by twenty six.
Okay. Well. Some of these pro, uh, we, we probably, well, all the programs we're talking about right now, we wouldn't have any problem spending it. Um, we may have, uh, uh, an in, a, a cash contribution that we need to make. For, uh, if we're successful with the Mass Works Grant. Uh, the Mass Works Grant has to do with the infrastructure for our development with Habitat on the North Plain Road site. Uh, I believe that if we're, we, we have applied for. Uh, several million dollars from the state, uh, for the infrastructure, meaning. Roads, sewer, water and drainage. Uh, site grading, uh, for, for, for our, uh, nineteen homes that we're, we're. Building there, and, um, I believe, Chris, does that have a ten percent match? Or in kind, or can we do in kind, I mean?
Yeah, we applied for three point two million. We included a ten percent contingency, so three hundred twenty thousand, and we said that would come. From some local source. Which could be ARPA, could be other source, ARPA would be a good source.
I'm sure you'd rather not do it from general funds.
Well, yeah.
Although you did say you put some, put together, put aside some money, anyway. Anyway, uh, to be determined. So hopefully that will come with some kind of funds that we can apply to some of these, uh, projects. Uh, although there's a lot of people that are requesting those, those monies, including. Uh, some of our housing partners, uh, construct in, in C D C. As you may know, the town has, I believe, publicly committed to. Providing construct with, um. Enough money, several hundred thousand dollars to, uh. Help with the down payment on the wind, wind flower. In. Project for workforce housing. Which, uh, this board has supported, and, uh, I wrote a letter on your behalf. In support of that, um. Uh, project, because I think it's the best way to do turnkey, uh, workforce housing right up, right off the bat. And I think it's a great use for our funds, because the reason we have, one of the reasons we have the. Crisis in workforce housing right now has to do with coming out of the economic issues arising from the pandemic. Uh, so, it's a, it's a win win as far as I can see. Um, more to come on that, you know, when we have more news on that. In the meantime, um, the first phase of the Community Preservation Act, it's very simple, but it does require us to put together a number. And, um, with your endorsement, I'll, I'll use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know if you wanna vote on that. Uh, question or not, so. Um. The other, next item on our agenda is a return to in person, uh, or hybrid meetings. Um. As you may know, uh, we are allowed to continue Zoom meetings now, I believe. Until at least the part, first part of next year. Uh, right now, it could also be extended permanently or, or, or at that time. We also, um, a couple of Great Barrington boards have begun doing hybrid meetings. Where they returned to, to meeting in person, I have one, um, Thursday night. That, um. Use the technology in the selectmen's meeting room. To, uh, allow virtual Zoom, uh, virtual connection over Zoom and have in person, uh. Uh, what is your pleasure, what do you feel about, do you think? We should be moving to in person or hybrid meetings? Or would you prefer to stay on Zoom?
I prefer the virtual world.
Yeah. Um, I, I have a very selfish, uh, desire to stay on Zoom, it's, it's, it's hard, um. Yeah, other, otherwise, it's, it's hard to do with kids, so. Um, just the time.
Well, eventually, we're gonna go back to in person, uh, I don't know whether we're ever gonna be back to. Anything that's fully in person, but hopefully, um. You know, I think we lose something with that. Garfield, do you have an opinion?
I'm okay either way, um, I was just wondering. If the public actually cares enough to attend their meetings anyway, so, I'm not sure if it would matter.
Only if we're gonna build affordable housing in our neighborhood.
Um. That's all I have on the agenda, is there any other items that any of the trustees would like to raise?
I have a scary thought since it's almost Halloween.
Uh huh.
I mean, if I, if I'm to bring it up. How does the water look on our fourteen to twenty home site there?
Well, it's, who's a tonic water, so the water has some of the issues. Uh, in that area.
Carol. Carolyn said they were gonna put filters in every house.
Every, every house is gonna have a whole house filter.
I think the preliminary infrastructure cost included filtration, I believe.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
But we are, we are planning on using town water. Or, I'm sorry, who's a tonic water? Not yet, town water. No, I don't have any.
If, if that's, if that's addressed, then I wanted to ask Chris if. Are there items on the letter that you sent to the select board? That. Just like the different ideas that, that we could be pursuing. Are there things on there that, that you think that are specifically things that the Affordable Trust Fund? That you would recommend that we, that we put, push forward that, that we haven't talked about?
I don't have it in front of me, but there's, I, I think the trust funds role will be primarily. In funding programs like the ones you've talked about tonight and funding your. Partners construct, et cetera. CDC, et cetera, in, in their projects. So primarily as a funding. Source. Assisting homeowners and renters directly, assisting your development partners. So the planning board will probably focus a lot more on regulatory issues. The select board will do a little bit of everything. And of course, there's always a role for the trust in, in development, but as, as we've discussed in this forum before. Takes a lot of time and it's probably not the best way to spend our time to be developers, so we'll. Be sure to partner with. With others in the area.
Okay.
So I think some of the ideas mentioned there were purchasing. I think down payment grants is mentioned. I think purchasing affordable housing restrictions and those sorts of things. Are really good rules for the trust and those are all things that you could. Include in your request for funding from CPA, should you wish to do that. Just being open to. All of these strategies. I think it was really a way for. I'll say the planning board, but also for, for me, just as a staff to all of you. To make sure that we were all aware of each other's ideas. And just to keep communication lines open. It's easier to do that sometimes than to convene meetings of four or five different boards trying to find a convenient night. And frankly, for me to attend the meetings on different nights of four or five different boards. So really just to get the ideas out there in front of you all. For consideration.
I did have one other thing. I was meeting with. A builder that I've worked with. Trying to get a sense of how much an ADU would cost to build and so forth and. She said that she had a property on Pope Street. That had a house on it. That they were planning to eventually tear down and put up two duplexes. But they're too busy. They're booked out to, they're booking in 2024 for construction now, so. She sort of offered it to me and said. You know, 140,000, it's yours. And I said, well, that's fine, but we're not gonna develop it. And so I sent something off to Carol Bosco-Bomman at CDC. But I haven't heard back yet, but she's, she wants to follow up on that at some point. So that's another project that we might think about. But I don't have enough. Feedback from her as to whether we should go forward with it or not. But it could be two duplexes or a three-bedroom house and a duplex. On that lot.
Site, as you all know, site acquisition is a really. Powerful tool that, that this, this body has and.
Yeah.
Other, other boards don't, don't really have, so.
Right. So that's on edge. She's. Willing to wait around for town meeting or whatever approval. So we could actually put it in as a proposal to the. CPC this year if. We have a developer lined up. I wouldn't want to. Bring it forward if we don't have a developer lined up because we're not gonna develop it.
Well, I think, well, yeah, I don't want the town to be stuck owning a piece of property without. Developer connection. Let's see what CDC says.
Okay. Maybe you and I, Fred, could meet with Carol again and. Somebody from her board and see if they have any interest at all in a project that's small.
I mean, 140,000 is looking cheap these days, but. For that, but I don't know what the other kinds of limitations are.
You'd have to RFP for that developer, but hopefully you. In a small community like South Berkshire, you. Everybody would. Support. Just one good response.
Okay, I guess we're gonna continue that one to get some more information on it. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Well.
It can be about anything that we've talked about or whatnot. I'd like to. You know, go through and just let everybody have a chance to talk and, but to move towards wrapping up. Joe, you add something, say?
I mean, I, I want to give, if anyone else wants to talk. But I, I, I just want to see what, what is, what's the next action on, on the. Planning for the. For the, the move, the tiny houses.
Okay, that is in my court. And basically. What I want to do, what I will propose is. Putting together an outline, working perhaps with Amy of how. Of, of, of the parameters. What, what are we actually asking for? Towards the goal of. Putting together an RFP for. That would have to be advertised. So basically between now and the next meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for November 15th. We would. Craft the language for an RFP. That would include what we would expect. That RFP language would then be brought back to the committee for a vote. And. With a budget number. As a placeholder, let's call it, or, or whatnot. And we would then. Vote on that and. The, have our staff. Which means Chris. Basically put it out on the street to see if we could get proposals.
Will those proposals be only for local nonprofits? Because we were kind of left out of the loop for ARPA funds. Is that gonna happen again?
No, under state law, the proposals would be open. Under the state procurement law.
And, and, and the RFPs.
We can't restrict it, basically.
And has to stay open for a certain amount of time?
You know, I worked in New York State, so I get confused, but basically I think it has to be on the street for two weeks. So between one meeting and the next, you know, if we could get it out, we would then have to. Develop criteria in order to evaluate the proposals. We would develop criteria before we sent it out. We would then use those criterias to select amongst, between and amongst. The submissions that we might receive.
Okay.
How much of this do you think we'll need to have? To bring in front of the CPC? We don't have to have it all worked out because that's gotta, that part one has to be in. By the end of this month sometime before.
I would like to do as little before the CPC as I could.
Okay.
I think that. If we had. Bigger pockets and lots more money. We could go ahead with a lot of these projects. I think we need to have a budget to. Look at our available resources. For right now, I mean, the request for the CPC. Is for money that we wouldn't be getting for another year, essentially. It's our budget for 23-24. Money that we'd be spending. 18 months from now. So what we need to do is to look at what. Between now and next summer. In this budget cycle. What funds do we have available and. What items have we already committed to and what items can we afford to commit to in? Your project on Pope Street, you know, might. Take. Two-thirds of our budget. If you're talking about having it all up front. Or it might, you know, have to be delayed till the next budget cycle. So Joe, I don't know if I answered your question. It's basically, we're gonna put together an RFP for the tiny house.
Sure. Can I, can I work with you on the RFP?
Yes, please do. Yes, volunteers. I like volunteers. And. After that, we're going, we're gonna try to, I, I'm gonna try to get some of the. Templates for the ADU incentive program that have been used by other towns.
That's great.
That's too much work. Any, is there anyone else who has a comment? Any members of the audience who would like to speak? Any media? Would like to speak? Please make yourself known and we can, you could be recognized.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, briefly, please.
I just want to say if I can support this project in any way. Fred or Joe, as you're doing the RFP or anything. Writing anything. Yeah, somebody reach out to me, please. I'd be honored to support.
Thank you. Can you put your contact information in the chat or? My email is, my email is included on the. Town, I think on the town website or send it through to Chris Rembold. And Chris will get it to me.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Without objection. I'd like to adjourn the meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for November 15th at 6:30 PM. Again via Zoom or by hybrid. Without objection. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Thank you for all your help.
With me.